The special use permit is conditioned upon getting that information. We received all of that information and it's been signed off by everybody before the meeting, so there are no outstanding concerns by any of the other agencies.
So just to review a little bit, and police don't have any issues? Okay, now do you know if the proposed 19 parking spaces along Memorial Drive?
No, like I said, those aren't, those are something that they're not required to meet a parking number. That could be changed later on as a minor change to the plan if somebody decided they didn't want them forward with that. If, when Memorial Drive's done, they figure that's not appropriate, it won't happen.
Okay, alright. Any other questions, anybody?
A bike rack, they're gonna have a bike rack.
Yes, there are bike racks and there are also tractor receptacles, I mean dumpster and food dumpsters. They do meet all those requirements, have gone through all of that too.
Oh, one other, smoking area. Is there, you know, nothing's, there's, no, not smoking, but smoking areas?
Are your buildings non-smoking?
Our buildings, they're non-smoking. So, you don't have to, yeah.
I didn't get that.
They, their buildings are non-smoking?
Right.
But there is a courtyard right up front of somebody, they could walk on the courtyard somewhere, walking on the sidewalk if you're concerned about a smoking area. He said they could designate a smoking area.
Or designate a non-smoking, okay.
Yeah.
That would be the better thing.
So the, getting back to talking about, you know, low-income senior housing, senior being ducked, and the definition were same as seniors, an individual that's 55 years of age and above, I mean that's, that's like 10 years before the typical age of retirement.
Not if you're lucky.
Well, actually, not, not, not all of us are lucky.
Actually, if you have, if you're retired in military, you can start collecting as soon as you get out. So if you're 18, at 38 years old, you can be fully retired.
Yeah, this catches the age limit.
It's, it, yeah, 55.
So you could be retired, but if you're not age qualified.
You could have somebody who's disabled at 55.
If you work for the postal service, so you only get put 20 years service in. In a lot of cases, you only get put 20 years of service in.
Yep.
To be retired. So, some of these 18-year-olds, they're graduated, they're retired at 30, 38.
Yeah.
They've got all those years of retirement. So they would have to be waiting two years till they got old.
All the questions satisfied?
I think so.
Alright, thank you. And here we'll be open for public comments, and these, was there any correspondence? Before we get to that.
You had two that were sitting at your desk. You received one from Sally Chapman, we also received from Jane Easton, I think her last name is actually Wales.
Jerry Loin.
No, Bloomington, Indiana, they own a house on 158 Taylor Street, and Sally Chapman sent an email. And I must apologize, I reuse letters when I'm doing a public notice. The dates for the meeting were correct, the letter was accurate dated March 17th of 2016, but it was mailed on February 7th, 2017, so it was just a typographical error on my part.
There's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this project? Limited to five minutes. Please approach the podium, name and address, please.
Good evening, commission members. I haven't had a chance to introduce myself yet to all of you. My name is Tyler Lupinen, I'm the DDA Executive and Economic Development Director. My address is also 535 Eighth Street. I'm here to present concerns and recommendations from the DDA Board concerning the PUD request. The purpose and intent of the C3 Central Business District is to protect and strengthen the commercial core of the City of Manistee, and in concert with the objectives of the Master Plan and Downtown Development Authority Plan. There are three areas of concern for the DDA that are present by this request. Number one, traffic flow and congestion. Zoning requires that a place of public assembly large be accessed primarily from a key street segment. The purpose of this is to ensure that traffic generated by a large event held in such a place can be built safely and efficiently without adverse impacts on the neighboring properties. The DDA is concerned that safe and efficient traffic flow that is important to businesses, residents, and patrons in the district could potentially be negatively impacted. MDOT also has safety concerns in the area of US 31 and the bridge, and traffic flow currently is challenging, and this concern may be exacerbated by increased traffic in the area. The condition of streets in the immediate areas such as Memorial, Fillmore, and Jefferson are, are poor. The DDA's concern is that the streets will need to be upgraded to handle traffic flows, and that the DDA will be asked to contribute financially to those projects. Therefore, the DDA recommends that the Planning Commission should request the completion of a traffic study as provided by Section 1863 Subsection B1C. The second concern of the DDA is the compatibility with the district. Purpose and intent section of the C3 in the zoning says that buildings formed are intended to complement existing commercial uses in surrounding residential neighborhoods. The Master Plan also states new infill buildings should respect established development as reflected in scale, massing, et cetera. Prevent over-expansion of the core downtown to preserve compact character and prevent unraveling at the edges through inappropriate new construction or rehabilitations. The concern of the DDA is building A and B would be the largest buildings in the district and not complementary to the historic nature of the downtown. The recommendation of the DDA is to request the developer to provide additional information and/or make changes to elements of the project to be more compatible with the district. Number three, density. The DDA has concern that the potential of an additional 84 units of housing will have a negative impact on the DDA's stated objective of redeveloping second and third floors of existing properties in the district, which would enable property owners to have proper cash flow to maintain their buildings. The DDA's recommendation is to request the developer to provide additional information to make, or to make changes to the project to minimize adverse impacts to the district by the high-density project. Additionally, tax and financial issues with the project are also of concern that will be addressed in the appropriate forum. Therefore, the DDA would request that the Planning Commission tables the request until the developer has time to respond to those areas of concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Daniels, 59 Smith Street, Manistee. I'm also the President of the Board of Directors of the Manistee County Council and Agency, so I have a little bit of an interest in this project. A couple things I wanted to address with Dr. Bennett, first of all. You talked about the farmer's market and the like, and there's that parking area across the street. The Council and Agents have preliminary discussions with the Manistee community garden and community kitchen folks about, A, moving the, the weekly farmer's market from that, over on the, over in South Side Memorial Drive into our parking lot to the west of the building during the summer months, and then we would host it inside the building during the winter months, and end up with a 12-month farmer's market here in Manistee, providing that we could get the food supplies during the winter from our places that are now building hoop houses and the like, and doing vegetables inside. So we are exploring that with them, but what that might do is open up more parking for the city over at the other Memorial Drive parking lot then. And then I also wanted to point out that, as I did at the DDA this afternoon, we're going to put somewhere between 42 and 84 dwelling units here. This is a two or three block, depending upon you measure it, perfectly level, easy walk to downtown Manistee. So we're going to put, you know, pick a number, 60 people, 100 people here, who will most part be able to walk and to get around on their own, who enjoy walking. Seniors are some of the major walkers that there are, and will be less than 3 blocks from, name it, from TJ's, from the Blue Fish, from Fillmore, from everything that's downtown, the Vogue, I mean, everything that's right there is an easy walk. Communities becoming walkable is becoming more and more important, and this goes a long way towards doing that. In addition to bringing the grocery store back to the north side so that they can actually walk to their grocery store again, which we've heard multiple requests for ever since Olson's had to close. So I just ask you, there are lots of concerns about congestion and everything, there certainly talk about traffic, but a bunch of years I didn't live here, but I grew up here and moved back here, and I never had any trouble getting dinner out of Olson's any time I was here, whether it be on Christmas Eve, or New Year's Eve, or whatever, I mean, it just, people adjust and it happens, even in the middle of the summer. The occasional tourist tries to make a left from the bridge, but I don't think anybody's gotten killed there yet. Anyway, I would just like to express that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good to speak for everyone's cypress. I'm just saying, I support this, I think it's an awesome project, and I would hope that you, listen, I plead a, let it, if you go.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mick Schumacher, 332 Fifth Street. New to the area, I moved back here after I retired last June, in the process of renovating over 100-year-old home here in Manistee, and volunteered down at the Senior Center. And this is a wonderful project, coming from somebody who just moved back here. Spent 33 years working for the Department of Defense, lived in seven other states, three other countries. So I had lots of choices, sold a home in Georgia to come and move here. What we haven't really talked about is the value of the Senior Center on the Manistee community and the population. What a concept it came where we have a package that provides a 20,000 square foot center to expand the capabilities for our seniors, at no additional cost to the taxpayers, because the beauty of this plan is how they use the grocer to help pay off the established cost of the property. That's a win-win. One of the things that I'm concerned about is that delaying this because of some of the concerns of the DDA could spoil the deal. You know, this is not the only community, we're not the only opportunity, but for us, this is a one-time best chance. One of the things that I think will also be noteworthy is the fact that when we talk about the parking, it also works the other way around. You know, then you're gonna have a facility with parking that can be used by other places. So people can park there and go to the farmer's market, or they can go to the new channel restaurants, or go across the bridge and use those facilities. So this actually doesn't hurt parking at all, unless you consider just kind of usurping the empty lot. The last point that was made by the DDA was the appearance and how it would impact the Victorian Village. It's a big box store and a steel pole barn now. I don't think you could do a whole lot worse. I think that the architectural drawings that I've seen would really enhance the view from across the river, and for a tourist, I think it would draw people into the community, and I'm very supportive and hope you will too.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Kent Wornich. I have two properties downtown. One, 394 River, which is where Glitz is, and one at 415 River, which was the old Eric Theater slash was the Salvation Army store. I'm full supporter of this. As far as traffic goes, you had a 38,000 square foot store, and you'd have Family Dollar and the other store, which has been various things at different times, used to be Sears. I don't see that this is gonna bring in any more traffic than those ever did. As far as taking away from second floor living downtown, these are for senior citizens. These people aren't gonna be walking upstairs to a second floor apartment downtown. I don't see any issue there. As far as fitting into the neighborhood, those are two four-story buildings, low four-story at that being residential, that fits very well with the new condos in the neighborhood, and with the North Channel three-story brewery apartment building. So I don't really see an issue there. So, I initially came here in support of the Hollander Group, their project, and I still support that, and I hope you will too someday, but that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Can I ask Denise a question?
Denise? Yes.
Denise, when you had the safety and fire look at this project, did they consider this traffic issue that was brought?
All of the lanes as far as meeting the correct standards for width and ingress and egress were all reviewed by the Indian Fire Department.
And they foresee a problem?
If there was an issue with entering and exiting the facility as it is laid out, they would have made a note, and that would have needed to be changed in their review.
Yeah, okay.
And additionally, the height limitation in the C3 zoning district is four stories and 58 heights.
And this means?
That's, yes, that's the zoning margin.
The public hearing is closed. Next portion is a public comment on agenda, agenda-related items. Alright, new business. TC 2017-04, TC 160 Memorial LLC, 160 Connaught 170 and 172 Memorial Drive, 163 and 169 Taylor Street, request for, request for a planned unit development. Public hearing was held earlier in response to a request from TC 160 LLC for a special use permit for a Phase 3 unit, planned unit development. At this time, the Planning Commission could take action to adopt a resolution to approve, with conditions, deny the request from TC 160 Memorial LLC for a special use permit for three-phase planned unit development that would divide the existing market into two units. Senior place of public assembly, large, grocer tenant, retail, construct two mixed-use buildings, 42 residential units, commercial space, covered parking, Phase 2 and Phase 3. Move for motion.
Yeah.
And you said there was no conditions?
I found none after they had correct, made all of the corrections and resubmitted all of the plans that were reviewed by myself and the DPW Director, City Engineer, and the Fire Department. And the reason for the PUD is because of the combining of the parcels, planning and development, not knowing where the market was going to be set, or how that is actually going to be, if there will be any area of the property that promised on US 31, or entrance off 31. So that was another thing, and also allowing flexibility for the 20-foot requirement for the first floor, because part of it is parking number one.
Okay, alright. So entertain a motion?
I would like the motion approved. That's okay.
Second?
Second.
Alright, okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Giodo, and it's second by Commissioner Fortier. Please take the roll. I'm sorry, questions?
Questions? Comments? Let's see, with Phase 3, you know, we've talked a little bit about Phase 3, the developer has said that this is something where he's not sure if they're going to be rentals, if they're going to be, you know, for purchase, he's not sure of the demographic, other than it's going to be a senior demographic that's, you know, gonna be in that. Phase 2 is, you know, that we've defined as within a specific income bracket, but Phase 3 is open-ended, you know, I was hoping that the developer would have more of a sense of, you know, who, who is gonna put.
Also be used for small exercise classes. As you can see on the door there, all these rooms are gonna be multifunctional. So the tables will have to be something that can be moved out for other, other functions in here. Okay, if they come this way. It's got a metal floor, it had a very heavy door on it.
So they can't weapons in there?
This is gonna be the ladies restroom. One of the ladies restrooms. That room and this room together will be a ladies restroom.
Are you saying the basement had a rifle range?
Yeah.
So, and there's a, we get to the basement pretty easy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep. An exercise area, quite a number of things in here.
Nice. I'm sorry.
Some of the pool tables might be out in the big room because of the limited size.
Yeah, maybe space around pool table.
Yep? Okay.
Yeah, in a minute.
Okay, coming to my place. This, this is where they used to park the air tracks, some of them are in this room. This is gonna be used for a multitude of things, including classes, like a small engine repair, cook, mechanics, trade skills.
I see you've got big wheels over there.
Although, that is not part of it, that, that will probably be removed. Those are overpack wheels.
Yeah.
Those were used to haul trees out of the woods.
But they're standing on the ground.
Well, they've, they've been here for a hundred years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They can't stay outside because they rot, they would get wet. So, this area might be rented out.
Yeah.
There's all, all these areas, none of this is cast and concrete, it's all possibly gonna change. That room over there might be a workshop.
Okay.
It might be an office that we rent to somebody. Places like the MIA are looking for space, they might be in here, the United Fund might be in here.
Okay.
So there's a variety of things.
To help keep paying for the building and the, all that kind.
Oh, yeah, we need, we need income, it's an expensive place to, to operate.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, come this way. Okay, this will, this will tell you about the, the, a couple of things that might be done in the big room here. And then when you're done with that, if you go down this way, someone will pick you up and show you the rest of the building.
Okay.
Okay?
See, they still have their army tank on here. Yeah. Oh, sure, you can have, like, talons in here and have all the blazer and stuff. See, 'cause they've got a stage. So if they've got a stage, you can, could. Did they, did they put that maybe they could have wedding receptions in here? They should. They should. It's a nice gym floor, it's all wood.
Yeah.
US Cavalry. Must have been. Tank division.
What would you say? See that big tank on the wall?
Yeah.
That's not really a tank, that's just a drawing. This would be the boiler room. Okay, furnace?
Yep, look at how huge that is to.
Yeah.
To take care of all of this. Well, they're taking lists and suggestions for how to use their space. She did say that they were looking in the future for wedding receptions that are dry.
Sure.
So there's a kitchen space, and somebody mentioned home economics classes, so.
I'm in the kitchen?
This, this looks like it was a walk-in cooler, I mean.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, see, 'cause it's summer, most of the temperature's here. Well, that's temperatures of the food and that kind of stuff, so that had to just be a storage spot for food.
Yeah.
And then they have, oh, I'm thinking ovens here, 'cause it puts.
Yeah.
That's what, that's a fryer, and a, or a heat, actually, it's a heat, it's, it's really, really hot water.
It's called a dishwasher.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the fryers would be over here, that they would clean everything off and stainless steel.
Place to wash dishes.
Dishes, yeah, that's the, teener. That was pointing.
Well, we got an arrow pointing up, so we're gonna go up on the stage. I've been up here many, many times.
Really? What for?
Oh, all kinds of events.
Oh.
Many years ago.
So the military used it for a lot of their services?
Oh, yeah, it was a community building for.
Before the military had it?
No, they've always had it.
Look, you can see out the window.
Yeah, you can see the Coast Guard station.
You look right down the channel, right out to the Big League.
We've got pretty good breakers coming in, three foot high.
Oh, yeah.
Are you scared?
No.
Well, I am.
I'm staged.
I'm scared, Rebecca. Yeah, they used to have Expo or something here, they had some kind of a, here.
Oh, okay.
Where they have vendors, this whole room was full, and then so was this stage.
So maybe those first rooms out there were like drills and exercise and stuff for the military, did they have barracks here?
I couldn't tell you, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm in the northwest corner, I guess.
To me, this would be great for artwork.
Yeah?
The light is so awesome, plus it's so inspirational.
How's that?
Don't you think so?
Hey, Mike? Do I have people here, is it?
Yeah, it looks nice, yeah.
Wouldn't this be a great place for artwork?
That's, that's, having some arts, art sessions.
Yeah, 'cause the light is so awesome and it's so inspirational.
I got a man down here who's part of this project, tell me, who are you?
I'm Kevin Schmussler, the Board President of the Armored Edges Project, and this is, this is our corner classroom. Beautiful view, there will be an elevated lift in here, so we'll be access, military access to the elevated platform and stage, that'll be installed before we open. This is sort of a multi-purpose classroom area, outdoor kitchen, or the outdoor kitchen, but outdoor garden we're hoping, hoping for. And, yeah, all different kinds of programming of how to balance your checkbook, to art classes, to, I don't know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts wanna be a part of this.
So this would be almost like a senior center for youth?
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, we call it civics. They don't teach that in school anymore, but it's very much needed.
Absolutely.
Operate.
And life skills.
Day-to-day life skills, and they just don't always have.
Now, what was a room like this used for, before?
I'm not sure if this room was before, I mean, it looks a little dirty 'cause we took out all the asbestos tiles.
Yeah.
So all the light asbestos has been removed from the building in the last few weeks, so now it's gonna, all about putting it back together.
So when do you hope to have some of your programs running?
Um, by the time summer hits, when school lets out, we hope to have the building open by then.
Okay. Every day?
Mm-hmm.
Seven days a week?
Mm-hmm. Yep. I'm not sure what the summer program will look like exactly yet, though.
Yeah.
During the school year, it will be after-school tutoring for all the kids. If we get our kitchen back up and running, we'll put that back together, offer more food and snacks and that, those areas. But summer, not what the summer schedule looks like yet, but definitely working on a grant for canoes and kayaks, and, yeah, whatever, whatever you're gonna get kids in here in summer. Great location for the summer, especially because, I mean, all the kids hang out on First Street Beach, so, just so we can kind of meet all kids' needs and all their interests, 'cause there are some of the kids that, you know, are into video gaming and all that, so.
Yeah.
Will be those opportunities here.
Okay.
But also, you know, to be unplugged, too.
Right. That sounds awesome. That sounds awesome.
Now, you got Manistee Chipwaw shirt on, and now you got Youth, Armory Youth Project. Are you from the high school on this, or are you from the church?
Uh, all three.
Oh, okay.
I'm the elementary principal at both Jefferson and Kennedy Elementary. I'm also a member of Faith Covenant Church.
Okay.
And that's how I got plugged in.
Good.
Superb. What are you gonna use this room for?
Which room?
Right here, where we are.
In the big gym? Over on that table, there's a list of activities, but it's just pretty much for a lot of open gym kind of ideas. Open gym, basketball, any kind of floor games, big group games. We hope that somebody will get concerts in here, any kind of events. I mean, this is a great big store.
I was here probably before you were born. They had wrestling, they had some of the...
Yeah, I heard there were WW something Wrestling.
It was a long time ago.
Circus was held here. People have asked if we could do like a boat show or RV show here.
Well, they used to have this program all the time in here. They had, the whole floor is full of booths and you go through.
Well, it's a huge open public space, and, you know, one thing about our community here, we're short on gym space, and we're always, you know, trying to fight over gym time and...
Your band that plays at Faith Covenant is good, they get to come up here and the kids can have a great time.
Get stage back up and running.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know why you need a community gym when you got a gym at the high school, you got a gym at Catholic Central, you got a gym at, I think, every elementary school.
Yep.
Why do you need another gym?
Those gyms are like always booked. There's no open gym time. I mean, people come and say, hey, can I use a gym? Like, when? You know, so there's someone always using our gym, so...
Okay.
It's gonna be great to have another gym in the community for our kids to kind of run and play in, and so, yeah, that's a...
Are people gonna be able to come in here and run and stuff like that?
Um, you know, I'm not exactly sure how that's, the programming like that's gonna work out. We're still kind of working those fine details. We have a programming and planning community. Vicky Sheffield, Robert Carpenter, our director, are really involved in, and so we're gonna kind of work on our programming first, what we want the Armory Youth Project to be all about. And then we'll see what other times are available after that. It's a, it's a big, big place and a lot of space.
I have the director down here, Del Yar.
Executive Director.
Robert Carpenter. Tell me a little bit about yourself, and then tell me about the Armory.
Sure. My wife and I actually moved up here in January from Pennsylvania, right outside of Pittsburgh. And my former careers have been in teaching, in education, camp directing, and church ministry as well, so it's kind of a huge conglomerate of things that all ties in together here.
So how'd you find out about this job?
So we had heard online. We were basically looking to get involved with a non-for-profit specifically doing these type of activities, and we came across in Michigan, way up in Michigan, and my wife's like, are you sure, Michigan? And we were really excited when we got up here and saw the collaboration.
How's the weather here compared to where you lived in Pennsylvania?
Well, we grew up in New York and Vermont, so we are used to the cold weather, but in PA, we're getting used to the cold weather again, so...
Tell me about the future of the Armory.
Sure. We're really excited to be able to collaborate with many different organizations, schools, churches, as well as social services, to be able to have relevant services here for students, such as tutoring, after-school open gym, after-school art programs, after-school educational programs as well, and it's a place that kids can come to have a safe place to hang out with friends.
Wow. So this place used to be, I know, really busy. I was remembering one of the first things I went to, when I came to town, was wrestling. They had a big thing here, we had people coming from Texas or wherever, and it was a, the big names.
Yep.
I mean, these are monster guys.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they fist beat each other to each other. Of course, as I say, it was all fake.
Yep. But it's a great place to have different events and stuff, especially for the kids. We wanna have a place that's specifically for them.
Yeah, and back in that room there, I think that's where they stored the tanks, I'm not sure.
Yep, and they had their motor pool back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So coming here from now or two years, what do you think a typical week might be? How many young people might you serve in a week, different, you know?
I would love to see a few hundred young people coming through here, not just from Manistee, but all over the county. We are countywide programs, so we wanna have transportation, getting kids down here, as well as being able to have regular programming after school from three to six in the evening, or I'm sorry, three to nine in the evening.
So then you're gonna, I was just talking to some of you, planning to be open every day?
Yep. So at our beginning this summer, we're gonna be open Monday through Friday and have events on Saturdays and Sundays. And then during the fall, we'll be open Monday through Friday from three to nine o'clock, so kids can come here after school, and then on Saturdays and Sundays, we'll have events as well.
So what's, what's in it for the adults? Because I know you're talking about kids.
Sure.
Now, here you're talking about tutors?
Yep. I think the biggest thing for the adults, it gives them an opportunity to come in and use their skills, their talents, to be able to influence young people. We wanna build up mentoring relationships, and specifically, relationships between students and adults to be able to pour into their lives, invest in them, and give them the best chances they go off to college.
Tutoring in what areas?
Tutoring in math, science, history, English, any area. We wanna provide that and just general homework help as well, so if a student comes in and just needs help, they can sit down with an adult and get assistance.
And then are you gonna be teaching them skills like, I think, did I hear something you said about a carpenter shop or something?
Yep. One of our visions in the future is to be able to have a little wood shop back there, and also be able to use the garage for changing car tires, changing oil, teaching trade skills such as that, and then also being able to have workshops where the kids can come in, learning about financial aid, financial literacy, college applications, college resumes.
And it's gonna be the projected opening, where you're gonna be...
Is this June. So we don't have a specific date in June yet, but this June is our projected...
We hope that all the snow is gone.
Yes.
What else you wanna tell me?
Just that we're really excited to be here, and if anyone would like to be involved, they can get on Facebook or onto our website, ArmoryYouthProject.com, find out how to volunteer, how to donate.
I could say on TV. What's that, what's that address again?
Sure, it's ArmoryYouthProject.com and on Facebook, and they can find out how to volunteer, how to donate, or how they can be involved in any way, shape, or form.
Good. I got another man down here. Tell me, who are you, and what, what do you, who do you represent?
Hi, I'm Herb Frost, and I am the Senior Pastor at Faith Covenant Church here in Manistee. I've been here only about five months. It's good to be here. And I got here right about the time that this project was, that the Armory Youth Project was starting to come to fruition with the purchase of the building and the hiring of the Executive Director. Very excited to see what this might mean for the transformation of the kids, the youth of the community, but also what that might mean long-term for the community itself, to provide a viable and a vital place of equipping and training kids to be good functioning, well-equipped adults.
Well, it sounds like you're gonna have tutoring and all kinds of things here.
Well, and again, that's gonna be up to Robert Carpenter, the Executive Director, to shape that, but I think that's part of the vision would be for tutoring, for mentoring, for other kinds of training opportunities. But, but the other part of this is a decidedly Christian emphasis. We don't, we don't wanna lose the fact that the faith formation of the kids is a vital part of their overall formation as, as adults are in our society.
So you're looking forward to it? Looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun, a lot of challenges?
We're very excited about it, Mike, we really are. Very much looking forward to it.
Thank you. I'm looking at the tree in our front yard. Got quite a bit of snow built up on it from last night. Here's a rose bush of some kind. You can see it's got snow built up on it. And then move to the other side of the yard, got a pine tree, quite a bit of snow built up on it. We don't have much snow out here in the street. Got maybe two inches of snow last night and today. Though I can see that we do have snow, brand-new snow.